All right. Thank you so much. So I'm going to call the meeting to order. I'm City Councilor Jesse Letterman, Chairman of the Committee on Health and Human Services. It's our March 3rd, 3 o'clock meeting. Just for everybody's information, this is a public subcommittee meeting of the Springfield City Council. As such, it is recorded by our friends at Focus Springfield and to make sure we're in compliance with open meeting law, it will be posted later on the City of Springfield's municipal meetings page on YouTube. Very grateful to our friends at Focus Springfield who have been able to allow us to continue to meet virtually, keep everybody safe during pandemic and continue to address the issues and needs of the City of Springfield. So the meeting that I've called today is to just have everybody have an opportunity to be in the same space and check in regarding the status of the opioid epidemic in the City of Springfield. I know that throughout the pandemic, many individuals on this call in their respective organizations and capacities have really continued to do extremely important work to combat and support individuals who are struggling with substance abuse addiction in the City of Springfield and throughout Hampden County. During my first two years as Chairman of the Committee on Health and Human Services, we spent a significant amount of time discussing this issue and also looking to support organizations and individuals in the City of Springfield who were working on this issue. And now that we are back in that capacity, I wanted to sort of recalibrate to discuss, you know, what is going on in the City of Springfield and again, how the City Council and the City of Springfield can support those efforts and also when possible facilitate any type of information or data sharing that is necessary. So I'd like to start just with folks introducing themselves and then I figured we could move through in three phases. I want to thank and recognize first though, my colleague on the committee, City Councilor Sean Curran. And Councilor Curran, would you like to say anything in opening on this topic?
No, just thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, for calling the meetings. It's much needed and much appreciated.
All right. Thank you very much, Councilor Curran. So I thought we could just begin with introductions. I think most folks know each other, but just so we can have a record of who's on the call, perhaps Commissioner Colton Harris could begin with an introduction. Sorry, Commissioner, you're muted.
I apologize. Helen Colton Harris, Commissioner, Division of Health and Human Services, City of Springfield.
Excellent. And maybe also the Commissioner's staff, Solo.
Hi, everyone. My name is Solo Dennis. I'm the Deputy Public Health Commissioner in the Department of Health and Human Services.
Great. And Justin?
Justin Chalmers, Department of Health and Human Services, City of Springfield, Opioid Overdose Prevention Program Director.
Great. Sergeant Elliott?
Good afternoon, Brian Elliott, Springfield Police Department, Metro Unit.
You're good. Patrick Muse?
Hi, everybody. I'm Patrick Muse. I'm the public care coordinator for emergency medical center.
Gabriel?
Hi, everybody. Gabriel Qualia, Post-Overdose Engagement Coordinator with Tapestry Health.
Pedro?
Good afternoon, everybody. Pedro Alvarez, Assistant Director, Urban Drug User Health and Outreach at Tapestry.
Mr. Johnson?
Good afternoon, good people. Richard Johnson, Program Director for O E N D and C T R, New North Citizens Council.
Magda?
Hello, everyone. I'm Magda Cologne with the Hampden County District Attorney's Office and representing the Hampden County Addiction Task Force. Thank you.
Thank you. I see we have a representative from the Sheriff's Department, although I'm not sure who's there, but I see they're logged on.
Hi, yep, Jesse. It's Cassie Sarno, Healthcare Project Coordinator at the Sheriff's Department. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Cassie. And we also have City Councilor Tracy Woodfield. Councilor Woodfield, would you like to introduce yourself?
Hello, Tracy Woodfield, Vice President of the Springfield City Council. Just glad to be here.
Great. All right. And I also want to thank Paul Todd Hill from W A M C for joining. So the first agenda item is just to receive an update on the status, especially relative to the numbers in terms of opioid overdoses in the City of Springfield and also just sort of a general update on outreach efforts that are already occurring. Commissioner, I thought we could start with yourself and your department and then move to the organizations relative to their data as well.
Well, thank you very much, Councilor Letterman. Thank you, Councilor Woodfield, as always, for being engaged and wanting to do what's right in terms of outreach and opioid overdoses in the City of Springfield. We appreciate the support. The Department of Health and Human Services, as you know, has been extremely involved in the COVID-19 response, but that has not stopped the department from engaging in the opioid overdose crises. I am appreciative of Tapestry Health who sends me data as far as their work is concerned on a monthly basis, as well as the methadone clinic in the north end. They send data to us so that we know the number of individuals that are being served, so we can work with the neighborhoods and communities around that data and that outreach. I think what I'm going to do at this point, because there are other individuals in the department who are aligned extremely close with the opioid overdose response, mine has been more related to mining the data and really working with those agencies and organizations, executive directors who are really immersed in this response. So at this point, I'm going to ask either Solo or Justin to speak briefly about their work and opioid overdose, recognizing that there are a lot of individuals who need to do updates. So Solo or Justin, I'm not sure which of you would like to begin the discussion.
Sure. And before we bring Solo and Justin, I just want to recognize the City Council President, Marcus Williams, is with us. Thank you, Mr. President. And Nellie Maldonado, our dear friend, I apologize, Nellie, I thought I had called you in the beginning. Nellie, would you like to introduce yourself quickly? Oh, Nellie, you're still muted. Sorry.
Nellie Maldonado, the Assistant to Harm Reduction at Tapestry, and I also am part of the Public Health Council.
Yes, and thank you, Nellie. I should have said that. You are on the Public Health Council and you do update us every month around Tapestry's outreach efforts. So thank you for that.
You're welcome.
So Justin or Solo, did you want to add on? And then I know Patrick and Gabe have specific data too that they're going to present.
Yeah, I can jump in. So if you'd like, everybody. So yeah, the opioid overdose prevention program director at the City of Springfield, one of the main things we've been doing is meeting for the past, I think, a year and a half now, as the Greater Springfield Opioid Crisis Collaborative with a host of other folk, including many of the folk from Tapestry and Magda, and again, the county Sheriff's Department here today, focusing on issues as they pertain to the City of Springfield as in 2019, we got some data that whereas the rest of the state, Massachusetts, opioid overdose deaths had gone down by, I think, 1%, the City of Springfield and some of the neighboring cities like Chickopee and Holyoke had risen. And based on that, we convened the G-SOC to try to address what issue head on as a collaborative. And as part of that, we've really been focusing on the subcommittee of post overdose outreach and trying to get that to happen here in the City of Springfield and been gathering data, which Patrick and Gabe know plan to talk on some more. And just trying to do their best to meet the needs of the City of Springfield citizens in this issue that, you know, does have quite an effect on our constituents.
Solo, did you want to add anything or are you comfortable with what Justin has articulated?
Well, I would just add, in addition to what Justin has said, overall, the program in the department, we have, we have received multiple grants working on multiple programs, have multiple partners in terms of local entities, and how can we address the challenges that's facing the City of Springfield? One thing I will share is through the leadership of the Commissioner and Justin, we have a collaborative effort with some of the partners that's on the Zoom meeting today, and I want to commend the time and energy in terms of looking at the data and how can we create data, how can we create systems and policy to actually identify programs that can address the needs of the residents in the City of Springfield.
So Solo, and quickly, I know that, I mean, we just don't have one grant. We have several grants that are dealing with not just opioid, but substance use disorders. I know we have the S A F C grant and also the M O P C grant or the grant that Justin is working with and P S F too. So even though you and Justin are on this call, there are other efforts going on in the department. So that would be our update, Councilor Letterman. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. So Gabe and Patrick, I know you've brought some specific data, and I would love for you to be able to present that at that time, because I think, you know, the way that I've always generally operated is, you know, this type of data really can drive the policymaking process. And so I think it's very important for councilors to hear about that. So if you could take it at this time, Patrick and Gabe.
Yeah, so I'll start, and I kind of provided a brief overview of the work that we've been doing generally here in Hampden County, and then talk a little bit about the numbers. So my name's Gabriel Qualia. I prepared some remarks, so I'd be succinct. It's very hard for me to do, trust me. I'm the Post- Overdose Engagement Coordinator, as I said, with Tapestry Health. We've had the pleasure of working with various police departments, going back to DART many years ago, training them with Narcan usage and distribution, overdose prevention education and harm reduction resources. Two years ago, we received a grant from the Mass Department of Public Health Bureau of Substance Abuse Services that's to do a post-program to accompany first responders on post overdose outreach and to expand efforts to decrease overdoses regionally. Currently, we work closely with the Massachusetts Department of Public Health and meet regularly with them and several other communities doing this work. This group includes post overdose teams from Fall River, Chelsea, Framingham, New Bedford, Worcester and Boston, just to name a few of them. It's extremely useful to be in contact with these other teams to discuss trends happening with overdoses statewide, as well as kind of like share best practices for the specific type of intervention. While we would love everyone to find a path to a substance-free life, we know only about like 10% of people with substance use disorder enter into recovery in any given year. So using harm reduction principles kind of helps us meet the person where they're at and assist them in any way possible while also preventing them from overdosing again, or God forbid, experiencing a fatal one. We know the majority of people experiencing overdose will put themselves at risk again soon after, and that people who are most likely to witness an overdose are people who use drugs and their family and social circle, right? So that's why it's important to get Narcan to them. This is why we make sure that they have Narcan or are educated about how to use it and ways that might prevent them from overdosing again. The official numbers of people in Springfield, and I have to refer to this here, who suffered a fatal overdose in 2020 have not been released yet by the Department of Public Health. We don't really know those. We do have some other statistics. For instance, in the first two quarters of 2019, there were 514 E M T calls for service involving opioids in Springfield. In the first two quarters of 2020, there were 607. So that's an 18% increase over the previous year. And that could be anything from an overdose to experiencing withdrawal or any other kind of things. It's not necessarily a non-fatal overdose. Some of them are also fatal overdoses as well. So when my colleagues and I see those numbers, we see 607 potential opportunities to engage with people when they could most use it. We also know that 108 people died from a fatal overdose in Springfield in 2018. And in 2019, that number was 102 people. So there was, you know, a slight decrease, but 2020 numbers, we think, are going to be probably higher than that. We don't know yet. We would like to see, you know, post overdose work expand and hopefully reduce those numbers. Well, we don't know with the work we've done if we prevented any repeat overdoses. We know in the past year, even with COVID, we've made 173 outreach attempts with communities such as Chickopee, Westfield, West Springfield. During those attempts, we've made contact with an overdose survivor or their family or circle of friends. 60% of the time, we provided not only Narcan overdose prevention planning, we've made referrals to medications for opiate use disorder, directly linked folks with mental health care, made referrals to family supports like Learn to Cope, and always let people know that there are people in their community that were there to help them, which is a very important thing, and kind of meet them at where they're at, literally as well as figuratively, right? I'm hopeful that we can expand these interventions to prevent overdose deaths, you know, as well as let people know their community is there to help and support them as they make steps to kind of live a substance-free life. I believe Patrick has some additional material.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't necessarily come prepared with the data. What I came prepared with was kind of what, you know, working with the G-SOC group and a bunch of people on this call, what we're trying to do in the City of Springfield, if you'd like me to speak to that.
Go ahead, Patrick.
So a little bit about me. I mean, my name's Patrick Muse. I've worked in the medical field for like the last 10 years. I started off working as an E M T for one of the ambulance services in the City of Springfield. I worked as an emergency room nurse in City Hartford, and I currently am the complex care coordinator. A little bit about that, I look for hyalization in the emergency department and try to identify some root causes of what's causing people to come into the hospital. Things like help literacy or not understanding medical diseases, people experiencing homelessness or living in unsafe conditions, mental health disorders, and of course, substance use disorders. From that, I work with emergency department psychiatrists, addiction hospital services. I create a plan and try to connect people to community resources. In continuity with that, the predecessor of my position, Carolyn Muse, created a program called Pathway to Care. Pathway to Care is a community outreach effort, partnerships with area police to meet people who survived an overdose in the community and try to engage them. The hope of that is to try to connect them with services in the community. So what can I, sorry, I'm a little nervous. I don't like public speaking. Forgive me.
You're fine.
Yeah. A question I've heard before is like, why aren't we doing this emergency department? A simple answer is, you know, we're making the effort, but the conditions for that aren't really that great, right? Our emergency departments are really focused on treating emergent medical needs, stabilizing patients and moving them to inpatient setting, or discharging them as quickly as that can safely be done, so we can make room for, you know, the next patient. What I can say from my observations with that is interacting with individuals that just experienced an overdose in the emergency room setting, usually the situation isn't exactly ideal. After reversal of Narcan, people who use drugs are in distress. The medicine puts people into withdrawal. The best way I can explain a withdrawal is something like you feel like you're in the, you got the flu, your stomach hurts, you're sweating. Sometimes people are actively vomiting and sprinkle a little adrenaline in there so you feel anxious and hypervigilant. It's not really the ideal time to talk with somebody about their options for treatment or help. People retain information best when they're more comfortable. And although we constantly strive to increase people's comfort levels in the emergency department, it's really not ideal. Outreach is a better way to interact with people who use drugs, having the opportunity for shorter encounters in a more natural setting, such as someone's home, we believe will lead to better outcomes. And really, normalizing this interaction and engaging with individuals in a non-judgmental way builds trust. It allows us to facilitate connection to community organizations. It's kind of like a way to streamline care, right? So can increase viable past or recovery and decrease negative interactions with the medical community that would otherwise dissuade people from seeking treatment. This is a way to educate families and social networks of people that are using drugs, and kind of give them guidance of where to turn when one of their loved ones needs help. And this is a way to decrease overdose death rates in our city. Really, this is like a way to fight back against circumstances where, in reality, it takes two days and 10 phone calls to get into treatment for an opiate disorder, but it's only taking five minutes to get a bundle of heroin delivered to your door. I'm here, you know, representing the G-SOC, which is made up community hospitals, public health representatives, opioid treatment providers, recovery community, and harm reductionists. We're really here to ask Springfield police to join in our efforts by sharing overdose survivor data so that we can market the City of Springfield to connect to overdose survivors. As a community, we need to do a little bit better of a deal in this epidemic. We're not doing great. For our collaboration to do so, we need a little help. The only way we can do this is with data from that one call. What we need is individuals' names, their home addresses, date of overdose, what Narcan used. Unfortunately, hospitals that receive these patients were kind of bound by HIPAA, right? So it's a privacy protection. We can't generate efforts for outreach for this. And this isn't something really that's new. This kind of collaboration of data sharing agreements are being used in different parts of Hampden County, throughout the state, in different parts of the country where opioid overdoses are prevalent. And they've really been successful at connecting people to resources. You know, over the last year or so, you know, our group has worked with, you know, a bunch of different resources, and we have ways that we can collect and use that information. So Public Health Department has a database, Ready E D I, which could collect the information through like an API connection. So it'd be protected information directly from police databases. And also, you know, the Sheriff's Department has a SIM database, which would be a manual that entry, take like two to three minutes to put the information in. Both of those systems can work together. They can collect the information and we can use that to generate outreach. And, you know, some of the resources that's in the community, the Sheriff's Department has been awarded a COSEP grant, which would provide for a recovery coach, coordinator, generate outreach, and a sheriff's deputy to carry out like a law enforcement piece of outreach in cases the city doesn't have the capacity to provide these resources. This grant's like a three-year thing. It provides resources over the next three years, so we can make sure this continues and goes on. We have commitments from organizations like Tapestry, New North Systems Council, who can provide resources for opioid education, naloxone distribution, harm reductionists, recovery coaches. Yeah, I mean, our correlation is worth to identify what's available and how we can use that. What we really need is some support so we can implement this intervention. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. That's really helpful information to understand. And I know we have Brian Elliott here from the Springfield Police Department. I want to bring Brian into the conversation, but first, you had mentioned the Sheriff's Department's COSEP grant. Cassie, are you able to speak a little bit about that grant first and what that is going to enable the Sheriff's Department to do?
Sure, definitely. Thanks, Pat, for providing a little background on that. So the COSEP is federal funding, which will be issued over a three-year timeframe, and it's going to be able to hopefully soon launch our RRTs, Rapid Response Teams. And like Pat said, we're here to just work with everyone else. We're here to really complement the efforts that are already going on, which I think is a really great platform to have everyone listening in right now. And I just wanted to provide a little perspective from the Sheriff's Department. I know, unfortunately, we see these men and women behind the wall after they're already arrested, but our opioid treatment numbers average around 150 OTP a day. At times, we've had over 200. Sometimes, you know, with all of our S J C and sudden releases we've had in the 90s. So it does vary, but we have been actively running an OTP since September 1st, 2019. And it's usually a 60/40 split between buprenorphine and methadone. So we do offer all of the medications, but it's just something that, you know, we'd love to catch these individuals before they are arrested and come into our care, and we hope to continue them after when they leave our care too. So happy to answer any questions as well.
Cassie, the grant that you're all working with at the Sheriff's Department that ultimately is looking to do outreach as well, what data does the Sheriff's Department, how is the Sheriff's Department intending to get data into that system to do that outreach?
Sure. So we were looking to work with some of our local first responder groups. Like Pat said, Sims is pretty user-friendly, similar to Ready E D I. So we're hoping to link up with those groups as well as any other partnering agencies who may be available and interested down the road, and we can filter our info through there.
Okay. So you're looking for data sources too, basically?
Yes, we are.
Okay. So I want to thank and welcome also to the call, City Councilor Malo Brown, the third member of the committee from Ward Four. Thank you, Councilor Brown. And also, Councilor Allen from Ward Seven is here. So I think I'd like to bring Brian Elliott into the conversation. Sergeant Elliott, I know you're familiar with these issues. We've worked together on the Hub and Core Initiative and a number of other issues as well. So I was hoping you could maybe bring some perspective from the Police Department. I know there's been, you know, some seeking of data from S P D and information sharing. So I was hoping you might be able to bring forward what's going on at S P D, both your own outreach efforts and also the future collaboration, if possible.
Thank you. So we've been working on this for some time. We've been doing limited outreach ourselves through Hub and Core. The exchange of information is always difficult when HIPAA and Corey applies. In theory, the hospitals have everything they need. In reality, they have an issue of sharing that data to go out and mobilize. And that makes perfect sense. I get that. We're also restricted under Corey, Criminal Offender Record Information System. I'm looking at the Plymouth County model that we have, and it requires waivers. There's a lot of back of the house agreements in that particular initiative, which have to be signed off by certainly the police commissioner, but it would have to go through our legal department. None of this is a deal breaker. It just has to happen. The process has to be vetted fully. The Commissioner is interested in this. I'm here now because she wants me to bring back all this information, brief her on it as best I can, and basically lay out the next steps. This is an increase or, I guess, an additional request beyond anything we're doing currently. From the sounds of it, I think we're the only ones that didn't receive a grant of any sort. We weren't requested to participate or partner with anybody relative to the grant application process. So we have to see what exactly is asked of us in terms of, I guess, the nuts and bolts of the data exchange. I know going through the Plymouth County model, which is used on the other end of the state, it's very law enforcement centric. Now, there was a discussion briefly about diverting people who are involved in, you know, drug use, more for programming, you know, more programming, less jail. I would suggest to you that that's the philosophy of the Springfield Police Department. You know, introducing somebody into the criminal justice system is, quite honestly, not the first or a desirable first step, for sure. With that, though, the models all suggest that every person that you're planning to outreach has to be run for warrants. It quickly becomes a police operation. Secondly, looking at our overdose data, I don't have the exact percentage, but I'll say at least 40% of our overdoses don't live in the city. So now we're talking about a 60% of our overall number would be numbers that we would, and you know, Patrick, you can, you can jump in on any of these percentages, but not every overdose. If there's 100, 40 of them don't live in Springfield. And then when you peel the onion a little further, these overdoses are happening in public spaces, such as the, you know, the bus station, bathrooms in public areas, gas stations, restaurants, intersections. And then when we respond, of course, we learn that, you know, we do the best we can to get an actual physical address. And there are many that live in the city, but there are many that do not. So, you know, obviously, the ones that do not live in the city, we would be unavailable to provide support relatives to that outreach. We recognize the outreach is trending, is necessary. It's just a matter of we have to, you know, get right down to what's required of us, and then the Commissioner has to obviously vet that. Um, I've been working with uh John Yvonne, who is, I think, the Deputy Superintendent of the Sheriff's Department. We've met several times and we continue to meet. Uh, I'm connecting him with our data analysis unit to work out the data piece. Uh, when we determine how we can support this, that allow go to the commissioner and to the law department. So we're well into it at this point relative to our participation. We're just not there yet.
Sergeant Elliott, two years ago, uh, we had a very similar meeting to this. I think that that time the programs were a little less developed, um, but I know that there there was a brief period where SPD uh was going out with mercy. I'm not sure Tapestry was yet involved at that time. What process wa- was being utilized then to support uh that outreach?
We were using the Hub and Core filter system. It was de-identified. So the only people that we were talking with were people who had already on-boarded the individual. So just say, for instance, we responded and the person was transported to Mercy Hospital. Uh, myself and Patrick both have those data records, and uh we we talk freely because we both have our own, you know, we independently ver- independently developed those infor- the the information data that we're talking about, and we're okay to talk. If I pull in, I don't know, let's just say a church group or something, that's where the rub is. Somebody who didn't respond initially, someone who's not involved in the investigation, someone who didn't provide a level of care or service on the day that it was required, and the duration of time becomes an issue relative to our response. Because as time goes on, even in the police department, we have to go get a a search warrant at some point. We just can't say, okay, that's the house. Let's just go in because we know that's okay. We have additional processes. And after our initial nine-one-one response for somebody who drops on the sidewalk, the clock is ticking, so to speak. And the initial exigency evaporates. Corey applies, just like HIPAA applies. Initially in the street, HIPAA isn't involved because we're still in the response mode. But once we get into, I guess, phase two, which the hospital is treating them, all the information's verified, I'm not in a position to go tell five people that that person that just dropped, here's their name, here's what happened to them, here's what I believe it is, and they've got a serious problem. Confidentially, confidentiality is is key. And to do it in a wholesale fashion, putting out aggregate numbers with names and addresses, as you can imagine in this day and age, we just have to be very certain that we're okay to do it. You know, the legal department agrees it's okay. Uh, all the memorandums are signed, the waivers are signed, everything's in place, and uh from there, off we go. But it's just for a large city, it's uh, you know, it's turning a battleship. You can turn the wheel, but eventually the bow turns and the boat goes in a direction that you want. In small, small cities and towns, lower populations without urban areas where there's high crime and disorder, you're only talking about maybe a couple of door knocks a week versus, you know, a significant higher amount in the city. So I I don't know if that's a the answer you're looking for, but hopefully that gives you some perspective.
Sure. So Brian, what um, it sounds like you guys are are considering this a little bit more deeply than than you might have been a few months ago. And I know with the pandemic too and everything going on, um, you know, this slows all processes down, but what uh what steps or further information does uh the commissioner and uh the backup house need? Uh, you know, from the the different community organizations that are engaged here to be able to get that vetting done and and reach kind of that uh hopeful, you know, decision that the data cas- data sharing can move forward?
There's a third party that's hosting the Sims database. So that's new. That didn't exist, and now it does. Uh, the grant was awarded, so that's new. It didn't exist when we last spoke. It does now. We've met with the Sheriff's Department, and I'm in regular email contact with John Yvonne. So the wheels are turning. Um, I think the next, the next thing that we're doing is we're having our officials from the Crime Analysis Unit meet with the Sheriff's Department to just really pin down exactly what they're looking for. If you look at some of the theoretical models, and I, again, I refer to the Plymouth County model, for uh the city the size of Springfield, there's a lot of hand sorting. There's a lot of uh management, if you will, on a daily basis. And we would have to find capacity to do that, uh because once you start, you don't want to stop, of course. And you don't want any lags or or anything that would be in error, if you will. Everything has to be fully vetted before it goes out. So with that, i- it's it's effort. Um, in addition to whatever we've got going now, they very well may have the capacity. I can't speak on their behalf. They may gather a lot of this data, and it's a few keystrokes and off it goes. I I can't say. But um, we definitely need to get uh sheriff's officials, including John Yvonne, in the room with our data folks. See how heavy a lift this is if it's a lifted off. And then go from there. That's uh, that's where we're at.
So when do you anticipate uh that meeting taking place? And maybe also if somebody could clarify for me, I know the Sheriff's Department is in is engaged um in trying to collect this data as well. Patrick, is is that data, you guys are looped in with the Sheriff's Department too, right? So once, once this process is done with the Sheriff's Department, theoretically, everybody will have the data that they need. Am I understanding correctly?
Uh, yeah, I mean, as far as I know, um, if, yes, so the SIM database will generate post-overdose outreach. That is the whole whole um path behind it, for sure.
It's the same, it's the same database, counselor. Um, John Yvonne is kind of the lead point person for the Sheriff's Department, but he he has his his folks working on it. Due to his position and title, he reached out to me. Uh, I'm just kind of coordinating. I've already sent out the emails uh to our head of crime analysis, to John, to the research, not the research partner, the um, the host agency, which is the Kelly Research Group. So um, we're we're getting all the right people in the room to have the right conversations. You know, y- yesterday is not fast enough. I get it. But uh, we're finally starting to line up the right people to have the right conversations, and I'll be glad to keep you updated as we move forward.
That's excellent.
Yeah, yeah. So um, one thing I just wanted to um uh share with everybody is that for quite some time now, the the Health Department for the city of Springfield is working on building a similar database to uh, well, this as a Sims database, ha- uh, you know, it has its its um focus similar to that, what uh North Hampton has been working on with their database with Hampshire Hope and the DART program that everybody's heard about. We have been building one here in the city of Springfield that's owned by the city Health Department, and it also does what the uh, what would suffice for what the SIM system does. And um, the way we're working on it is that so that it would have a direct API connection to be able to take the data from this police department with the data sharing agreements and all the backend stuff that Sergeant Elliott was talking about and before that would happen, but that would reduce the issue of the police having to enter the data once their database, and then again into another database. And um, our database is is a public health database that does this post overdose outreach work, and it can connect to the Sheriff's Department system. They have the um plan to go county-wide with the Sims database, but now also North Hampton has their database that's going out to Berkshire County and Franklin County, et cetera. And so to one of the things that the Sergeant Elliott said earlier today with how, yes, that very true, when we have overdoses here in Springfield, many of them uh aren't people who are from Springfield, and the the idea is to be able to connect, and this is a malleable system that the Health Department has, will be able to connect with the Sheriff's Department database and with databases out west. So if somebody were, let's say, from North Hampton or from Agawam, and they were to overdose in Springfield, data will be able to be pushed to these other systems where uh they're connected to those communities, and outreach could happen there. Similarly, if somebody from Springfield were to overdose in another community, and we were connected to that database, we would be able to get that data. So our system would be able to generate data from the police to take that data to to generate from the police and share it with folk like, for instance, like a team like Gabe and Patrick, so that they can follow up folk who've had an overdose and 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 offer them the services that they that they offer, which would be could be harm reduction up to treatment, or even just Narcan or some information. Uh, but that's something that the that the Health Department is trying to do for years, and we're very close to doing to that uh with our system close to being built. And um, so that's something that I just wanted to add as well to that is that we're these these initiatives are happening and been happening. But it takes a while to get everything all set to go, but we really would like to at some point in time be able to um speak more with the police department about how that could work.
See, and that makes perfect sense from my end. You know, collaborating with another city department uh for the city of the size of Springfield makes perfect sense to me. And and I was aware that you were building this, and I was a little confused when we had a third-party hosted site come in. Um, and and not to discredit them at all, but I I think our comfort levels within the city confines is that partnering with the Health Department uh makes sense in 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 all aspects of, uh, we trust, you know, Commissioner Carlton and her team, Justin and and Soleil. W- we have a a track record with them, and I think i- i- it adds a layer, I think, that we we need for for the police department, that we're partnering with our Health Department partners, and uh we want to see good work done. W- we do not want to go to an overdose. An overdose, in our opinion, is a failure. It's a missed opportunity to prevent it. So so we concur and subscribe to all of the good practices. It's just finding a pathway that we can all meet our need is the process. So I I'm right there with you, Justin, on that.
Thank you, Sergeant, and and I I think that's an important aspect to this. Commissioner uh Carlton Harris said, did you raise your hand? I thought I saw your hand raised a moment ago. I wanted to make sure we came, you know, so a- as we come to you, Commissioner, um, you know, if it's possible, uh, perhaps for uh collaboration with Commissioner Claproot, as Sergeant Elliott indicated, that partnership to give the police department the um the sort of cover they need to share that information. Wondering your thoughts on that.
Well, no, I was just going to, uh, Justin has really responded because that's what I was going to do, just talk about the Department of Health and Human Services, our database, and really having connectivity with uh Springfield Police Department and knowing that together we can be very secure around the data and those levels of access that are needed. Other, I mean, obviously, you know databases, every level is going to have an access point, and so that means that um the Health Department and potentially Police Department might have overall access, and then another access point may be just for outreach that we can push to them, so that all data that Sergeant Elliott is rightfully concerned about would be contained within a city entity with our partners having access to various layers in order to do their work. So that's our goal, and um that's been our conversation. And so I'm happy, Sergeant Elliott, to hear that this is something that might make sense for our networking and working together futuristically around housing data. So, thank you.
I wish I could have been so succinct and eloquent because you you hit it right on the head. Perfect.
So I I think that, I think that may be the breakthrough there, is is if the, you know, Police Department and Health Department can get together around the data, and then the Health Department can take on um the aspect of the actual data sharing. I think that may may end up being uh the key. So I think that if if we can see those conversations continue um and then come back in the very near future, uh, once you've been able to to have uh those connections, I guess what I want to make sure we leave here today with is if there's any additional connections that need to be made or information that needs to be transmitted um between all parties, uh that we're aware of that. Um, so uh for folks that are on the call from Health Department, Sergeant Elliott, Patrick, um, everybody from G-SOC, I mean, i- is there any missing links right now to stop the process from moving forward?
I I would like to request a meeting with Justin, you know, to to have a virtual meeting, have a coffee, just kind of pencil this out on paper, draft it out, um, that will really help leapfrog things for me. Um, and I think you are the next conversation I need to have.
Absolutely, and I can invite the the, you know, some folk that I would that can speak to the database as well too, like in some of the backend stuff that you would need to have for information when when they pull it together.
Great.
Patrick, did you want to go? And then I want to bring any counselors in too. I know we've been, we've been sort of having a a conversation among the panelists at the committee, but we do have several counselors here and um I want to make sure that if they have questions or or comments that they are able to share those as well. But Patrick, go ahead. Oh, Patrick, I think you're muted. I'm sorry.
So just so I can be clear, um, I think it's great, you know, the, we're talking about sharing the information, but I I think it's really important that in the sense we need um some assistance from the Sheriff's Department, we need to pull them into this as well because of the resources that they can help provide for them. So is there a chance that we can try to involve them as well? I I realize it's not really my place, but some of those resources that the Sheriff's Department is able to provide are really important.
It sounds like John Yvonne is is involved. It sounds like John should would continue to be involved. So I think that they, I think that that aspect is there, Patrick.
Right, that's correct. I'll be briefing John about this meeting afterwards, and um we'd love to loop in with um Brian and Justin if that's appropriate, or maybe after that, um, when they work out some of the um, you know, background data things. We would love for Ready EDI to eventually connect into Sims. Um, both both databases will be able to work together, and I think that'll provide the best um outcomes as we see so many Springfield people and non-Springfield residents overdosing in Springfield. So we would love to be a part of that conversation as well.
I think that, yeah, I I agree, Cassie. I think that's the idea, is that eventually the Springfield database would share with the countywide as well. So so absolutely. Uh, so counselors, if anybody uh would like to add uh questions, comments, uh, just simply raise your hand um in the chat. I know we do still have uh several counselors on the call. And as we, uh, just wait to see if there's any, any hands raised. Um, I just want to thank, you know, really everyone for joining and and coming together. I think that this is really an incredible group of individuals in the city of Springfield, many with long histories of of doing this important work, and, you know, I I think this is certainly something that I'm supportive of. I want to see move forward. I think we saw it happen in a limited way previously, um, but to the degree that that the committee uh can serve as a convening point uh just to bring everybody in, I think we have multiple agencies that all want to do the right thing. We just want to make sure that everybody uh is able to get the data they need and also be able to follow all of the different ethical uh and legal laws that, you know, they need to stay within. So time is certainly of the essence. I think we all know that. Uh, you know, I remember when when it happened the first time a couple of years ago. I remember talking with with Brian afterwards and saying, we got, you know, you got somebody in the first day. And so I think that, you know, we all share that. If we save one life with this, then it is worth doing. So uh with that said, I see Counselor Allen has a question. Counselor Allen?
Yeah, hi. Uh, thanks, Counselor Letterman. Um, am I, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear and see you, counselor.
Okay, great. Yeah, great to uh to just hear the dialogue and all the work being done in the different places. I'm not sure. I was at the meeting, uh, what the the other meeting you referred to. And uh, certainly seen Brian Elliott and, you know, uh, presenting to the council lots of times on youth initiatives and things, and I know the work that he does and presumably everybody else. I don't know everybody else on the call, but it's great to hear about the collaboration and the important work that needs to be done in this area. So thank you. I don't have a specific question. I just want to thank you for the work you're doing and wish you the best in keeping it, doing it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Allen. Counselor Whitfield?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to um mimic what Counselor Allen said. Um, thank you for the great work that you're all doing. Gabe, thank you for the data and responding so quickly um to my question. I appreciate that. That means you got it all right there. Um, so someone we can definitely reach out to. I do have a question about the Hampton County um addiction task forces. Everyone on here, a member of that? So everyone goes to those meetings. So at those meetings, do you guys have this um in-depth conversation also about the data and the data sharing and um getting the databases together?
Yes, and we also have them at the Greater Springfield Opioid Crisis Collaborative as well. Tracy?
The Greater Springfield Opioid?
Yeah, G-SOC for short. Uh, another another acronym. Uh, we we said that, we actually started that because we'd we'd had the HCAP meeting that we were going to for the Hampton Countywide focus, uh, that meeting is in Springfield. That meeting is a Springfield, solely a Springfield-focused opioid crisis collaborative.
Okay. So I remember when I was going to those meetings, there was a mention or there was some database that came about. Is that one of the two databases we're talking about here or are these separate? I don't know, Magda, if you remember.
That is tied in, Counselor. I remember we had someone share data at one of those meetings. They went through a data process, and that contract, I believe, was also through the Springfield Department of Health and Human Services, if I remember correctly. So that I know that we engaged those individuals and they did go to the HCAP meetings and do presentations. I want to say a couple of years ago, maybe.
Like a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield. Seeing no further questions, I had just one more question before we close. And we'll do some action items at the conclusion as well, but a little bit moving off of the data piece. Much of our conversations prior to the pandemic had also revolved around actual access to treatment in Western Massachusetts. And I had requested from the State Department of Public Health right at the beginning of the pandemic, which I am certain they did not do because the pandemic then onset. But I had requested an audit of all treatment options available in the four counties, specifically comparing them to treatment options in the eastern part of the state by population density. I'm just curious, sort of anecdotally, or if anybody has any hard data that they can send us afterwards, but with the pandemic ongoing, what has been people's experience in actually supporting individuals to reach detox in the area? Or are we still seeing people heading out to Eastern Mass? I mean, what is that looking like right now, maybe from Pedro or Gabe or anybody on the ground?
I mean, I can speak to that kind of subjectively. The access to medication for opiate use disorder has become really, really good. They've kind of, there's been some more places opening up and they've kind of loosened the rules around telehealth with that. So that's been good, but again, with the lowering the amount of people that they can have in, you know, TSS and CSS and, you know, detox and long-term, it's still pretty difficult. Sometimes better than others. It fluctuates a lot. Like some weeks it'll be fairly easy and other times, you know, someone will call several places and get, and I'm not sure when. So that does continue to be an issue. And even bigger than that is also the issue of long-term housing. Housing in general, because, you know, people go to these programs for 30 days, they get out. They don't have, you know, even a sober house or like even, you know, kind of a, any kind of single-room occupancy place to go. And they're out on the street again, and that's not conducive to kind of, you know, keeping up with anything. But even in medication for opiate use disorder, it's hard to keep up if you're not regularly housed. So a little bit better or a lot better with the medication for opiate use disorder. Short-term, you know, detox and longer term is still really difficult right now.
Did Tapestry end up receiving that grant for transportation for individuals reaching detox and then coming back?
No. No, we didn't. There's a program going on in Holyoke now as part of like the Healing Community Study, where they're providing transportation out of the Hope for Holyoke Recovery Center. They're calling it Highway to Hope, where they're going to provide transportation for individuals to detoxes. Because again, that's an issue here in Western Mass. Right now, we have the same amount of detoxes here. We have three, one in Springfield, one in Greenfield, one in Holyoke, and then one out in Pittsfield. You know, that's a little harder for individuals to get to. Again, with COVID, the amount of people in these places kind of, you know, cut in half, pretty much, you know. So again, it's hard to try to find some bed space for individuals going into that acute treatment. As far as, you know, again, the transportation thing, that's something that we've looked at. We're looking to see what the Healing Community Study might bring to Springfield in the next coming year to see what that might look like and maybe some interventions that can come out of that.
Commissioner, anything on, anything on the, anything on transportation or access out of our department here?
No, we do not have, and I'll again let, I'll defer to Justin and Solo, but we do not have transportation for, and again, I just think we've been advocating for years for more substance use disorder beds in the western region. We have not seen an increase in our capacity. And so transportation is an issue and getting individuals to a place when a bed is open. So no, Counselor, we do not have any additional resources for transportation.
Okay. So we'll circle back on that. I know we're approaching four o'clock. We're going to take two more comments. Mr. Johnson, did you have your hand up?
I did. Thank you. A couple of things. One, while we think about the apparatus and the infrastructure for our data collection and distribution effort, I did want to lift up the fact that when we talk about the the statistics around the overdoses in the city of Springfield, whether they're native to Springfield or somewhere else, one of the things I want to really emphasize is that each of those individuals are in fact people. And so when we think about the potential to reach one person and save that individual from a fatal overdose, it matters. It truly matters. Beyond that, I think that these efforts also serve to allow us to make contact with individuals beyond that individual who actually uses substances. I'm talking about their families. I'm saying that the addiction issues that people have are truly family issues because they don't just impact that individual, they impact the entire family. And if we're able to impart information that could benefit that family and finding pathways to care or something similar to treatment, then that's a win in our estimation. The other thing I want to say with regard to transportation, utilizing some resources that the District Attorney's Office provided to New North Citizens Council. We've had abilities to transport people beyond Springfield. When we talk about access to treatment beds, I think the Commissioner of Health indicated that we've been fighting that battle for a number of years, actually a decade or so. And it doesn't seem to get any better. When Gabe talked about secondary or longer-term programming of beds for individuals, it's non-existent for our residents. We have people who come here and get beds, but when we try to send people to places like the McGee Unit in Pittsfield, they literally have, but they won't share the policy, where they will not accept people from Springfield. But our beds are occupied by people from around the state. And so I think that that's something that the Commission has to take a look at, and we have to continuously advocate for more beds and more long-term treatment. That bottleneck exists and it exists, I think, purposefully. You know, it prevents individuals from really getting long-term recovery. And I say to Gabe, with regard to access to medically assisted treatment, yeah, they're popping up all over the place. But what do we do with regard to service planning that really translates into long-term recovery? I think that we have a recidivism issue around some of those, programs that are popping up, just giving people all kinds of medical Medicaid and not really looking down the street in terms of sustaining their recovery. So that's what I wanted to say to that and just encourage folks to really engage in this conversation around allowing us to go out and meet these individuals who have had these experiences of overdose so that we might prevent the next fatal overdose.
Well said, Johnson. We'll take our final question from President Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I just want to thank everyone on the call for the work you're doing to combat substance abuse issues. I mean, you know, I think the framing around the cost to society that substance abuse causes is important too, like the loss of productivity for folks that are affected. Healthcare costs, legal costs are all a part of that picture as well. And one of the kind of thoughts or questions I had arose when I heard that there's certainly a gap in communication between the hospital and service providers due to, of course, HIPAA laws and things of that nature. So I was just wondering, have any of you ever heard of, or do you know if there's any work and might through legislative means or other means in regards to some type of self-identification that folks who are abusers can kind of opt into to receive services across different networks?
Patrick? Anything like that?
So I know that there's initiatives through like the addiction medicine providers who are trying to get rid of things like 42 CFR, which basically say that, you know, we can't communicate across the health spectrum about anybody's substance use disorder. So, you know, there's some really big barriers up there, and I think if you want to take a look at something, that's one of the biggest ones that we currently have. You know, HIPAA should cover people and protect their information so that they're not getting in trouble at places like work or other things. But 42 CFR is a pretty big barrier.
All right. Thank you, President Williams. Thank you all. So action items, it sounds like Sergeant Elliott, Patrick, Justin and John are going to connect on the final questions with the Police Department backend. I'll follow up with both Commissioners as well relative to the interdepartmental collaboration. And just want to say thank you to everybody. I think we did break down a couple of barriers today. I think we made some progress, but you know, I'll be blunt, this is something that must happen in the city of Springfield, something I want to see happen. And I've worked with all of you in the past. I don't think there's a better group of people to make it happen, to be honest with you. So I really believe that together, we're going to be able to move this forward, and I'm hopeful that in the very near future, we'll be able to see this type of outreach occur as a regular part of our work in the city of Springfield. Entertained a motion to adjourn from the committee?
Motion to adjourn?
Seconded by Counsel Brown. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody.